Here.
Thank you, and Mayor Sander.
Here. And if you would continue with the Metro Cable TV television announcement, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable fourteen, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, May twenty first, at nine a.m., and Monday, May twenty fifth, at six p.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within forty-eight hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Very good, we're gonna go on to the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. For the invocation, we will just have a standing moment of silence. And for the Pledge of Allegiance, Tara, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
... To the flag of the United States of America. And as a republic, we're for which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence, please. All right, thank you very much. Okay, we have no presentations scheduled on this agenda. That brings us to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council on any matter or not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, I will call you up to the podium at the point when we take up that agenda item. Do we have any public comment turned in, other than what's in print in front of us?
We do not have any other public comment for items not on the agenda.
Okay. In that case, I'm gonna go to council reports and Mr. McGarvey.
Yes, I've got one thing I'm gonna be talking about, it's the Memorial Day. This is twice now we've had something happen to stop us from having our, like Veterans Day in twenty eighteen, the smoke stopped our honoring our veterans on Veterans Day. And this time, the coronavirus has stopped us from having a Memorial Day. There are, however, going to be a few things to pay attention, we're still honoring our veterans. There's flags on Folsom Boulevard, there's three hundred flags tribute on Folsom Boulevard. The flags will be installed on Friday, the twenty-third, and remain on display through Memorial Day holiday of May the twenty-fifth. Memorial wreath at Memorial Plaza, located in front of the VA Hospital, Mather. Public service to provide the tribute. Billboard honors will acknowledge the contributions of thirty veterans who are branches of the service who have been spotlighted with memorial brick ceremony during a standard Memorial Day salute. This Memorial Day, the veterans will be remembered at rotating displays of digital billboards along Highway fifty in cooperation with the clear memorial, excuse me, clear channel, outdoor and out front media. We're trying to do everything we can to continue to honor our veterans, which we will do. Our committee has been doing quite a bit since two thousand and six to continue honoring our veterans, and this is what we are doing this year for Memorial Day. Hopefully, we will be able to have a regular ceremony, or at least whatever regular is going to be in November for Veterans Day. But we're gonna try to do that then, to have our regular ceremonies for the veterans on Veterans Day in November of this year. So I think that's what I've got right now, but we are going to have some, as I said, you'll be able to notice all the flags on Folsom Boulevard and the rest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGarvey. Ms. Budge is absent, Mr. Terry.
Um, okay. We had our two-by-two with Holtfordville last week. Some of the stuff that actually happened last week with graduations and whatnot for Cordova High and middle schools. Kind of enough of what they think they might be trying to approach when it comes to higher school. I don't think, David, you can weigh into, I don't think any of the school districts have any idea how they're going to function in the fall and what that looks like. You know, any kind of suggestions of staggered schedules and things like that that the government had suggested are really things that are all gonna have to be negotiated at the local level and are not gonna be uniform across the state. Just like a lot of these reopenings aren't being, aren't uniform across the state, and they're happening by region, by county. We had a Lower American River Conservancy meeting last week on Wednesday, actually the same day as the Holtfordville meeting. Not a whole lot to report, there was a planned amount of money that was gonna be programmed into the Wildlife Conservation Committee, which is whoever oversees it at the state level. That was, it's still in the may revise at this point, so there still could be some funding for that, just to go into the conservancy, which would then be funded into various projects in the conservancy. I think of note, you know, we, we're still talking about the Measure H funding for the Soulborne Farm project. That got its funding through the Lower American River Conservancy, it was really the third project to be funded out of the conservancy. If there is a parks bond or some other things that come along, those obviously go through the conservancy to be funded, but at this point, there isn't additional funding expected right now to fund. As more things come along, I would really encourage staff and public works to continue to look for shovel projects and to design things now to be ready for when there is. You know, all, all estimations right now is that there will be continued park bonds and water bonds and other things like that, you know, on future ballots and funding throughout the state, or through the state's budget, even with the struggles that they've had, they continue to have funding there, and we should be prepared for infrastructure projects in our city along the parkway. I think... Yeah, that's all I got for now.
All right, very good. Mr. Gaywood.
So I had a meeting with, with STA, where basically, we weren't able to defeat, so they're going to put the raising of a sales tax, asset sales tax, on the ballot, even though it's gonna cost the county about a million dollars to put on the ballot, we still weren't able to talk enough council members into not, but we did have five people that voted against it. It's, we, out of the, they took just people that wrote in, we had about seven hundred people that wrote in, and of that, I would say ninety-two percent said what we had been agreeing as a group saying that, you know, our hearing is that, that raising taxes as of right now is a bad time. And so, they, pretty much, everyone's like, you know, a lot of how dare yous and what are you guys thinking, but that's basically what came across. And so, tried my best, but couldn't get enough people to actually listen. Let's see what happens.
So, Carrot, the county board still has to vote to put that on the ballot, right? County Board of Supervisors?
Right. The county board still has to vote to put that on the ballot, and then after that, it will then go to all our citizens to vote on a raising sales tax.
Yeah, because they're the only agency that has the power to put that on the ballot, I think.
Right. Exactly. So, I am disappointed, but, you know, did my best. The next thing is, what else we got going on right now? That was pretty much it for my meeting. Glad to hear, got to talk to some of the school district people about the graduation, and, you know, thanks, David, for showing up, because everyone was really tickled pink on what we were able to do. And it was even better to see our PGA, our, our parent group to actually get out there and make the little things for the kids for their, to go on their, in front of their lawns. So that was cool. That's it, that's all I got.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Gaywood. My own report, I'll just start where you left off. I went to the, Cyrus, what are we calling it, Cordova High Seniors Day, Senior Celebration Day?
Celebration of graduates.
Celebration of the graduates of Cordova without, it wasn't really a graduation, but it kind of, sort of, felt like one, in a way. So they invited parents and seniors and siblings to drive through in a car. There were dozens of teachers there waving at the students, there were balloons and tents, there was a whole bunch of places where they would stop, and then people would give them things. I think they were given a bundle of flowers at one station, the principal and superintendent and teachers were there cheering for them, talking to them at a distance, wearing masks. At another station, they were given a yard sign, I think actually twice they were given a yard sign, they were given a bag of trinkets, they were given some documentation of their time at Cordova, I think, I don't know if that was, diploma was included there or not, I never got a look at that, because we were staying away from everybody else. I think they were given a T-shirt at one stop, and at the last stop was the city booth, and it was, it was staffed by our youth officers, and by Linda Budge and myself, and our city manager Cyrus. And so, we were handing out masks that, and we've got these for all schools, middle schools and high schools, a special mask, the Cordova one, I should have brought it, had a, has a Cordova Lancer on it, so it's a black mask, fits over your ears, got a Lancer on it, kind of a usable, but, you know, a memory of this crazy year for these poor high school seniors who we wanted to honor. And I went up to, to all the cars that I had a chance to talk to, and congratulated them on their graduation, and then said something to the effect of, you know, this was a lot of work, but the harder work is yet still ahead, because we expect a lot of you, our graduates, we're very proud of you, we're very excited about what you're going to do next, but we have high expectations for what you do next. So we don't produce average in Rancho Cordova, we only do above average, and that's what we expect of you, we expect you to do great things and make us all proud. So congratulations, go out there and be awesome. Something like that was the, was the send-off message. And I, I got a lot of positive feedback from everyone that day, there was a lot of positive energy there, and I think the school district is still planning some sort of an event, they don't know when, or where, or what that might be, but this was sort of it with respect to what we're doing this month for seniors. I think next week they come back and turn in their books or something silly, but that's not a, that's not an event. So, I was glad to participate in that, I was glad that the city, oh, I'm sorry, the city also handed out a little card that had a message similar to what I just said, except shorter, of course. Just said we were proud of them and, and congratulations. I feel like maybe, sort of somehow, we could have done more, I have no idea what that would have been, I'm carrying a little bit of guilt on behalf of the community that these seniors had to end their school year this way. I guess it'll be memorable, they'll always be able to talk about it, but it's not what they were expecting, not what we were expecting. But in any case, I think, I think we did some good there. I've had a slew of meetings, JPA meetings, Secog meetings, all by Zoom, of course. We have an interesting issue developing at Secog, wherein some jurisdictions wish to divide money that Secog can decide how it's spent, and they wish to decide it, divide it on a per capita basis instead of a competitive basis. And so this is a really big policy question for Secog. Do we want to continue on funding projects based on competition? In other words, the Rancho Cordova project scores a little better than the Citrus Heights project, because we're doing bike lanes, and, or we've got more traffic, or we're diverting more people out of cars, or it's transit supportive, scores a little better than some other jurisdictions' project, and so we get funded and they don't. Do we want it to be competitive like that? Or do we just want everybody to get a check based on how many people they have? Or how many jobs they have, or how many cars they have, or some other metric like that? The challenge is, most public works director, I think, would probably love to have, and some city administrators would love to have just the standard revenue, just bring it in here, it's all fair, chop it up by, by person. What we lose in that process, in my view, and I'm willing to hear, you know, any kind of feedback on this, is what we lose is the ability to go for our, for our, what would you call it, getting seconds from the state? Because sometimes when the state divides up resources, and we're competing for those at Secog, on behalf of the region, we're competing for those transportation dollars at the state, they will give grants, they'll give all the money out, and then someone won't be able to perform. Someone will mess up and not be able to spend the money within the prescribed time. If that happens, you know, Santa Monica or someplace like that, the money goes back into the pool, and the state, on a short-term basis, has to decide where do those dollars go? And what they look at are things like, well, if we give it to Secog, how quickly will they spend it, and how, how much are they following our priorities in terms of how they're spending money? If we distribute it on a per capita basis, we'll be ignoring what the state wants us to do. If we're doing it on a competitive basis, that's what they like. And so in the past, I don't know, ten years, we've probably received somewhere in the neighborhood of forty million extra dollars, because we're a good performer and we do competition for projects. That would be gone if we went this other route. That, that number, I think Secog's still trying to figure out exactly how many bonus dollars we've received, but something in that neighborhood. So we're having this debate about whether to parse it up per capita or continue with the competition, the way we've done for, for a decade. the competition the way we've done for, uh, for a decade or more. So more to, more to come on that front, probably over coming months. The one thing I did, well, the other thing I did attend in person was, um, I went to a Woodside Home that's under development, that's being, um, used to fund research and, uh, support patients at St. Jude's Children's Center. And they requested that people from different agencies come and sign the floor. So on behalf of Ranch Cordova, I signed the floor in the room of this house at Woodside Homes. And, uh, similar to what we did right here in this room before we remodeled the space, we had the community come in and write all over this floor, then carpeting went over it. And there's some photos in the back of actually what's on the floor. Um, and they're doing something similar here, they're photographing the floor and they had it all nicely lined out, but those memories are sort of like sealed in that house as our support for their charity with St. Jude's. So I thought that was, uh, a neat event. Actually got to attend something in person. Done a whole bunch of other things, uh, the Folsom Cordova Unified School District Two by Two, Donald's report, I think, was right on target. There are way too many unknowns for them to know what this fall is going to look like. Um, they wish they knew, we wish they knew, uh, I wish we could assist them, I wish I could forecast for them what, what they're likely to need to do, but none of that's really possible just now. So we just have to hang in there and see what the fall is like for schools, for sports, for churches, for events, for businesses. They have to hang in there and see what the, what the future holds. Uh, finally, um, I've been on a number of, a lot of conference calls, some of which I've been a speaker on, um, and a presenter on. And there, there are an awful lot of calls out there for a national policy of fill in the blank. We need a national policy on testing, we need a national policy on youth sports, we need a national policy on when to open restaurants. And the pushback I've been giving those efforts is that all too often a national policy becomes, well, what do they need in New York City and let's apply that to everybody else? And I'm calling BS on that approach. Because what works for youth sports in New York City is not going to work for youth sports in Ranch Cordova or rural Nebraska or anywhere else in the country, probably other than New York City. And we really need regional and local approaches, the same way we organize our governments, focused on regional and local approaches to governance and not expect a federal government or a federal doctrine or a national plan to accommodate every little local nuance. That's just falderol, in, in my opinion. So, um, I've been advocating that on your behalf with various, uh, groups that I, that I've been in contact with. I just wanted to air it here in case anyone had any, any challenges to that view. Okay, that is my report. I think next up, Cyrus, city manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I think most everything has already been mentioned. The only thing I would like to add is, uh, a program called, uh, The Great Plates. A few weeks ago, the governor announced a program funneling some of, uh, the FEMA funds the, through the state that can be used to, uh, provide some meals to some at-risk seniors and, uh, people who, who may have a need for, for, for meals. And, uh, I'm proud to say that we were the first city in Northern California to be able to take advantage of the program and be able to start, uh, the meals, uh, and using the program. And to date, we have, uh, done 1,260 delivery of meals and about 60, uh, senior and at-risk participants are included in this program. The program, of course, is growing. It has a limited life and I think it would, uh, expire sometimes in June, uh, but just wanted to acknowledge the work that we've done and acknowledge the, the great work that our, our staff has done to be able to, uh, participate in the program and help the members of our community, especially those who, who needed this program very badly. So, so thank you very much.
Who's, who's picking up? There's a local match involved in that program. Who's picking up the local match?
So, uh, ba, what we have done, uh, the staff, it does, it's a fairly labor-intensive program. We have a number of staff involved. The match, the local match, about six or seven percent. Uh, most of it can be, uh, through staff time. So staff time counts as in-kind contribution and as in-kind match. We've also entered into contract with, uh, uh, a number of restaurants, local restaurants to, uh, to participate in the program. And initially the program, and still the program has, uh, has two purposes. One was to help the local businesses to be able to, especially restaurants during this difficult time, to be able to provide some services and have some, uh, some availability to some customers and also help our seniors and those who need assistance for some of their meals. So, so we're fulfilling those of those two objectives and, uh, it's a very robust program and, and it's going well. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Okay, very good. After that report, we are on to item number nine, consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff unless a member of council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. So these are items nine point one through nine point six on our agenda. Does council wish to pull any of these items? Hearing none, I'm.
I'll, uh, move the calendar.
Okay.
In a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I'll take McGarvey as the second, I heard that one first. All right, roll call please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're moving on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consists of matters deemed routine and uncontroversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to pull?
You not on move of the items?
Motion made and seconded by Gatewood. Got you that time, Garrett. All right. Uh, roll call please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. That was items 10.1 and 10.2. That takes us on to public hearing items. Item number 11, uh, 11.1 specifically, if the clerk would announce that subject.
California North State University Dormitory Conditional Use Permit in Major Design Review, project number DD 9919.
All right. Darcy, is this you?
Darcy Galard. Got it?
There you go.
Good evening. Um, this item, staff is requesting to be continued to June 15th. As the council is aware, we received some comment letters. We would like some additional time to be able to address those letters and bring this item back before you.
All right, very good. Looking for a motion to continue until June 15th on item 11.1.
Can we start with public comment?
Move.
Do we want to do public comment? Okay. It's a public hearing, so let's say I'm opening the public hearing, taking public comment.
So the council did receive, and the city did receive, public comment, um, by email. And I'd less, just like to read the names of those who, uh, sent in their communication. So the email that we received was from Millie Bailey, was public comment number one. Following Millie, we have Brent Lee, Judy Cruz, and we also have Perri. I'm not sure how to pronounce that. Perry, Parrot.
Okay. Thank you for those. We're going to leave this open as a public hearing because it will be coming back on June the 15th. Is there a motion to continue until June 15th?
So moved.
Moved by McGarvey.
Move.
Seconded by Gatewood. Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we are on to regular calendar items and item 12.1. This is fiscal year 2020, 2021, Community Enhancement Fund allocations. And here comes our staff. Seems like we just met about this. And we did.
We did indeed.
Less than a week ago.
Yes, on May 12th. Just give me one moment to get settled.
So thank you for having me again. I'm Stacy Delaney and I am part of the Community Enhancement Fund team. And with me tonight is Daniel Leonardi, he's sitting across the room. And we are picking up where we left off on May 12th.
You have your car license?
But I do have my car license, so. And we're just waiting a second for... There we go. So this evening I will be presenting some additional information regarding several of the grant applications that were flagged for discussion during the May 12th meeting. And this will help inform the project selection and the funding amount across all categories of the Community Enhancement Fund. And we do anticipate that council will be making these decisions tonight. And then it will come back to you in the form of a resolution that you will adopt in June. And since we've covered this items multiple times in May, I do anticipate that it will come back to you on the consent calendar. So just to provide a little recap, we did receive grant requests that totaled approximately $6 million when we opened up the Community Enhancement Fund application period. And we anticipate that council will adopt approximately $1.9 million worth of projects. On Tuesday, May 12th, you heard and we discussed the initial staff recommendations that were shared regarding these community grant applications. And going back to the May 4th meeting, we discussed the internal departments and the legacy fund allocation. And again, at the May 12th meeting, you did request additional information on 10 projects. And in a moment, I'm going to go ahead and share that information with you, but we're going to first start with a really short recap since you did receive information on two prior meetings. So again, we're anticipating that the community grants will be approximately $1.9 million. Um, public safety, as it was presented to you on May 4th, totaled approximately $1.6 million. The legacy fund allocation totaled $1.4 million. And then the three focus areas in fiscal year 2021 that staff plans on undertaking as it relates to the legacy fund is the Ranch Cordova Little League project, which is going to be approximately $1 million and focus on the design outreach consulting in one field. A $2 million project as it relates to the youth center. And then a $480,000 project for soilborne farms. So that will make up the legacy fund projects that we will focus on in the coming year.
So that dollar total that you just mentioned doesn't equal this?
Correct. And that's because.
Spending some things already authorized and sitting in the fund, this is just our contribution to the fund?
Correct. So each year council has generally made, uh, deposit into the fund and then we have more funds than just 1.4 that's listed on this screen. So you've already committed to some additional projects. But the focus area in 2021 will be those three that I just mentioned. Um, we do plan on having 936,000 allocated to both Public Works as well as Community Economic Development. And then 5% of the fund is related to the administration of the fund itself. And the detail for all of this is included in the application matrix, which was part of this item, starting on approximately pages 21 through 24. So at the May 12th meeting, these were the items that council had requested additional information on and further discussion. And two of the 10 items that are on the screen are related to Cordova Recreation and Park District facilities. So we do need to have Vice Mayor Garrett Gatewood recuse himself from the initial conversation as it relates to items 58 and 60.
Let's take up, uh, 58 and 60. Garrett, would you recuse yourself, please? All right. Um, do you want to continue with those two items?
Yes. So items 58 and 60, both related to Cordova Recreation and Park District as the facility. Um, they were not the actual applicant, but they did offer support in both cases. We have had additional conversations with the Senior Advisory Center, which is the one that had requested funding for the laptops and equipments for seniors. And in those conversations, we identified that if the city recommended $13,385, that the advisory center could make up the difference, which was up to 5%. We do have Kathy Jacobs on the line who's available to answer questions, but essentially the staff recommendation plus the 5% would bring them to the full amount they requested.
Good.
And with regards to number 60, um, we had some additional conversations with Ron Fredman, who's with the Sacramento Ballet. Um, in discussions with him, he provided me with a revised budget that would focus on virtual classes that the Neil Orchard Senior Center could offer. And it was at a much lower price than the original request.
Remarkably different number.
Yes, so under the new proposal, we are recommending the full amount that they requested in that revision, which is $3,170. So between the two, um, they would get both equipment for the senior center as well as a new program offering that would focus on fall prevention for seniors. So that is the staff recommendation on those two.
Those seem like, uh, good results. Any comments, McGarvey? Anybody else? Any comment? All right, why don't we, uh, do a motion on those two items, 58 and 60? We'll invite Garrett back in.
And move those two, 58 and 60.
Mr. Terry, do you have a second? Motion made and seconded. Roll call please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood recused himself and Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
Good. Garrett, come on back. I'll send him a message to come back, whatever's necessary.
We just did.
Okay.
He's back.
All right, uh, we can continue on, item 10 on the list.
Okay, so with regards to item number 10, the applicant has withdrawn their funding request and they support staff's recommendation to show this as no funding.
Cyrus, do you have anything you want to add on, on this one? This is that confusing thing about community council requesting a second sign, some, some in the city saying, oh, we have one, but we have one only for emergencies, not for this use, and we request use of their sign, so should we give them a second sign?
Yes.
Trying to sort all that out.
So, yeah, I did, I did have a conversation with Shelley Blanchard, the executive director for Cordova Community Council Foundation. And we both agreed that a better and probably a, uh, long-term solution would be to identify a location in the city where we could put a, a digital sign, a permanent digital sign, as opposed to coming up with this makeshift movable sign that, uh, sometimes blocks the bike lane or sometimes gets in the way of other activities. So we both feel that this is probably a better solution and we, but we would like to spend our energies in the coming months to work on that project and identify a location that would work for the community and also for, uh, in terms of the design features that need to be developed and specified.
So we'll put up a few digital billboards around town?
So we start with one to see how it goes.
Linda's out of the meeting, so we can go wild with this.
They're not cheap.
All right, very good. Thank you, Cyrus.
So moving on to application number 20. At the time I submitted the revised information, I had not yet connected with Anil Reddy, who was the individual who submitted the grant application for Festival of Flowers. So on this screen, it shows a recommendation of 5,000, but council may want to have further discussion. Um, in my talks with Anil today, I had asked him if he had only received 5,000, could they scale the event and make it happen? And he felt that the additional funding would be needed upwards of a total of 12,000 as opposed to five in order to have appropriate safeguards in place if they were able if they were able to hold a large-scale event that would have roughly 2,000 to 2,500 people. He also isn't sure if his regular donors will be able to support it in the same manner it has been in the past, just due to the financial impacts that other people are facing due to COVID-19. Anil might be available via Zoom. Stacy or Persephone, is that correct?
It could be a year before we can do big public events again.
Right. So, that's kind of the unknown piece. We're not sure if it can happen or not. Right now, the event would be slated to happen in October of 2020. So, it's up for council discussion.
And Anil is on the call if anyone has questions.
Well, I know there's a lot of support for this project, but there's a huge unknown hanging over it this year. So, one option is to fund and know that if it doesn't happen, the money is not gone. It's reusable again next year.
Right. I'd like to make sure that we fund it at the full amount because this is one of those events that's known for Rancho and the biggest one next in the region, if it happens. I would love to have it happen, but, you know, we all know due to COVID, nothing might actually happen. But if it does, I think you should get the 12 for what he's asking for.
I don't, I think it's been multiple years. I agree, it's a great event. But other events, we've come down on the cost. But this one, I believe we started much lower than 12. And at a certain point, we'd like to see these organizations branch out and find their own sponsors. So, I'm fine with the staff's recommendation.
I'm more for the 12 to see if it'll happen or not. I have a feeling it's not going to and they'll have to use it again in the following year. There are so many things that are questionable right now. And that's another, as great as that Festival of Flowers is, I think it has some questions on it right now. But I would do with the 12, I think.
My preference would probably at this point be for the five, but that leaves us split 2-2. So, I think I will also go for the 12 and make that our recommendation.
David, just to remind you, we will have another vote on this with Linda in the room.
We will. We could hold it until then, I suppose.
Yeah, I'm not trying to convince you to change your vote, but.
Yeah, I go with David's first vote. Thanks, David. I appreciate it.
Oh, it's fun being the swing vote. So, are we going to wait until Linda comes back or are we going to just hold it? Let's, well, we have one more bite at the apple. This will have to, hopefully, there's nothing else on the list that has to be decided that night. But yeah, if we're 2-2 on it, then we will hold on that one. It's at least five. Let's put it that way.
Another option is it's coming out of the Community Partnership Fund and you could theoretically hold up to $12,000 from that fund and it wouldn't change your bottom line.
There we go. That sounds like an answer.
I like that. Yeah.
Do you want to vote on that?
I was thinking we'd just do all these at once.
Okay.
Rather than go have too many votes.
That works.
22?
22. The Playa Art Park is a grant application that was submitted by the Sacramento Valley Spark Organization. Staff's recommendation remains not recommended for funding. There were still questions as to whether or not they would have a suitable location as well as the ability to hold it in light of COVID-19. I believe that Ed Fletcher submitted public comment regarding that item.
I have three public comments for item number 22. Those came from Paul Summerhousen, Henry Lee. Actually, there's four. Steven Raspa and Ed Fletcher. And those are all in support of this project.
And Ed may also be available via Zoom for questions.
So, we have a public art fund in Rancho Cordova. How large is that and how much have we committed on other projects?
So, in fiscal year 2021, the public art fund is recommended at 50,000. We haven't committed to specific projects. We were going to roll out a call for proposals to do the smud utility boxes. And that's scalable, just depending on how many utility boxes are selected. It's probably going to be 500 to $1,000 a utility box.
Cyrus, I don't know. You and I had a conversation on this, on this application. I don't know if you want to share anything on it. But there appears to be some unknowns and perhaps some room for negotiation here. And one way is to ask that the proponents work with us in our public art project dollars. We may need to adjust that total number, depending on whether or not this project's in or not. But Cyrus, you had some comments you might want to share.
Yeah. What I shared, I think the idea of having some additional funding in the public art fund, the bucket, allowing staff some flexibility to work with the applicant. At this point, we're dealing with a project that doesn't, has not secured a location yet. And some of the details of the project and the artwork that would be exhibited is not known to staff. So, our suggestion is to provide, perhaps add a little more funding to the bucket of funding for the public arts and allow staff to work with the applicant over the coming months to identify and work out some of the details. And then we can come back to you with a scale for the project that could make sense and could be implemented in the coming year. There's another, another unknown, of course, is the COVID-19. We don't even know if the concept that's being proposed can be workable in this current environment. I think, yes.
Another question I had for this one was, is this truly like, they're bringing exhibits here that they want to, that they want to exhibit? Or are these things that they are bringing from Burning Man and they're storing them here? Because they have nowhere else to put them and they want us to pay them to put stuff that they would have paid to store somewhere. Does that make sense?
Yeah. My understanding, my understanding is that these are some pieces that will be exhibited at this location, not necessarily pieces that they don't have storage for. I had an opportunity, I had a chance to see the one in Reno, the one that was exhibited in Reno. There are also some of the pieces, significant pieces from the Burning Man that are displayed in Reno as permanent fixtures that were purchased by the city or the Chamber of Commerce. And those are some of the art pieces that I'm really interested to see if we have an opportunity to discuss with the organization to see if we can bring some of those to the city.
But again, I'm really interested in this. I'd like to do it. I think it is something with COVID that you might be able to do some sort of art installation outside where people can social distance and go see something like this. But I also have this weird feeling in my gut that these things would have cost them money to put in storage facilities and now they want us to pay them to leave them outside. So, I'd really like to have that clarified, like what this really is.
Yeah, I think that's a good reason to have staff work with them on this and figure out a little more on it.
Yeah. I have questions that I'd like answered before I would say yes, but I'm there.
So, maybe if the council is willing to add, let's say, another $10,000 to the public art bucket, then that would give us some flexibility to work with the applicant to see what options are available to us.
I'm fine with that.
I was going to suggest 20, but because I don't want the smud utility project to go down either. We've been, I think, we authorized that, some utility box stuff, years ago and just haven't gotten there with it. So, I'd suggest we add 20 to the public art project fund, refer this project there potentially for funding. Any other council comments on that?
I was kind of curious. That Sacramento Valley, that Burning Man, was that going to be at the Playa Art Park at Mine Shaft?
That's one potential location they're exploring. Another location I know they were exploring is the vacant lot we own across from Mills Station. And before we develop it, could they put up their temporary exhibit there? Might be a positive use in what is otherwise a vacant lot, if it's done well. But I think there's so many questions. Just referring to staff makes sense.
Yeah. That was my only question on that.
So, my proposal is add 20 to public art project. Garrett, do you have a comment on it or Donald?
I'd be fine with 20 in case it could go to other projects that we might fund anyways. But again, before I would say that I weren't going to say yes to this, I really want more details.
So, you want to see, have staff bring it back to us?
Yeah. So, we can add that to the, that doesn't mean go funding. I want more information before, a thumbs up on that, on this one.
All right. Garrett, did I hear you in there too?
Yep, that works for me.
All right. Mr. McGarvey? You all right with that proposal?
Yeah, that's okay with me. Yeah. I'll follow you on that.
All right. That takes us to item 31, Sly Park.
Yes. Stacy, did you have any other public comments that we need to acknowledge?
I did want to acknowledge for application number 58, when Vice Mayor Gatewood stepped out, we did have Kathy Jacobs, who wrote something and submitted in advance of that item, which council all did receive and read prior to.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Item 31?
Yes. So, item 31 had to do with Sly Park field trips for Sac City Unified School District students specifically attending Abraham Lincoln and AM Win Elementary School. We had a follow-up conversation with Diane Brown, who represents Superintendent Aguilar within the district. She did not feel that they would need full funding due to the fact that they're not sure that field trips will take place in the same manner or frequency that would typically happen in a school year. And she was supportive of a lower amount and still felt that it could be put to good use, whether specific to Sly Park or some other environmental or similar science-based field trip. So, the staff recommendation is 15,000. We would pull 7,500 from the field trip fund, which would be kind of their pro-rata share. And then we could provide up to 7,500 more from the Community Partnerships Fund if needed.
Okay.
With regards to, yes.
One more time?
What is your question?
I'm sorry. What did you speak to at Sac City Unified? You said she?
Diane Brown, who helps manage the grant funding for the district. And she also was in consultation regarding the overall recommendations and ranking amongst the school district.
Okay. Thank you.
Item 46 is the Point Break Anti-Bullying Workshops. The staff recommendation is $15,000 that would come out of fiscal year 2021. In addition, we would roll over at least $5,000. It could be as high as 10. Based upon my conversations with the Executive Director, Dan Palmer, he has not submitted all his receipts to us. So, he's saying the amount that would roll over is 5,000. Together with the 15 that we're recommending, it would allow Point Break to do one workshop at each of the schools listed, which is Mills, Mitchell, Cordova, and Kenny. We would also give him the flexibility. If one school couldn't happen, he could, of course, double up and do two at one school. When I spoke to him today, he was supportive of staff's recommendation. And he also acknowledged that there would be some unknowns as it relates to field trips and assemblies happening. So, he was supportive of that recommendation.
All right.
Item 55 is the Whisker Warriors Animal Defense Fund. I believe there is a public comment regarding that item.
There is. Tara Kolbenbach?
I did have conversations with Tara last week. She's the Executive Director of Whisker Warriors. She was supportive of the recommendation. We're essentially recommending 46 of the 49,000. That would allow them to keep up with the demand as well as the increased costs associated with services. And the 3,000 difference would be something that Whisker Warriors could pick up. And I believe she's here.
An actual real person for public comment.
I'm here.
Feels so old-fashioned.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Tara with Whisker Warriors Animal Defense Fund. Thank you, mayor and council members and city manager for letting me speak today. So, what we have, I wanted to give you an update since we talked last week. And Community Spay and Neuter Clinic is preparing to open. They've called some people with canceled surgeries to reschedule. So, that's good news because I think the concern was, are we really going to have anywhere to use this money? But we are, okay? And then SPCA, they're holding a mega feral clinic this week with only eight people, you know, trusted people. So, they've started that. And I assume right after that, they're going to start having the spay and neuter clinic start. So, by the time this grant proposal starts in July, I assume that things will be pretty much at least some semblance of normal and people will be able to use these grant.
Good.
This grant. So, I just wanted to let you know that I didn't have all the information with me last time. That last year, we, in our grant, we had 716 animals to be spayed or neutered. That was in our grant, but actual, we don't know the actual number that were done because, in a sense, because of COVID-19, people couldn't use their vouchers. But the year before, it was over 735. So, what we try to do, what I do when I grant, is try to do less than what we really think is going to happen. We had 38,000 last year, which was really insufficient. So, this year, we're doing 46 now. And that's, based on that, that's 8,000 more. But what we really needed was 10,000 because, this is what's going on. The Veterans Village now has 146 units and a lot of those guys have puppies. So, we have to get those done. And that's going to be coming up. And that was what I was thinking. And then we've had many more requests for dog spay-neuter. So, in my budget, I was planning that we would do the same number of cats. But because of cost increases, $10 per cat, those kittens are not included in that anymore. So, they used to be $20. Now, they're 30. So, it was $2,885 higher. Two more rabbits because there's more need for rabbits, spay-neuter, and they're very expensive. It's $145 per rabbit. It's because of the anesthesia that they have to use. It's, it's just more, they're more complex. And then, and only SPCA does those. And then for dogs, I had added 29 more dogs. But because dogs cost $30 more, it was, most of the money was going to them. It was $6,760. And even with the, without the dogs, it's 5,000, 5,000 more dollars. So, we were anticipating more dogs. So, 440, it would be 747 animals altogether in this grant. But again, we'll make up whatever difference we have to make. But I wanted to let you know what our strategy was.
Good. Thank you for the numbers, too.
Kind of a question on, there was a thing I saw on the paper about the number of people who are just letting their animals go because of COVID-19. You know, they can't keep them anymore. So, just put them out, dropping them off the side of the road or something like that. Is that something that you're seeing is increasing numbers?
We work with All Creatures Animal Rescue and she's been getting more and more dog food from us because people are trying to abandon their animals or are abandoning them, like in farms or whatever. And then the farm people come to her wanting food because they're trying to help these animals and they're trying to get them adopted out. So far, she's been pretty successful. And what she does for the ones who want to abandon them, she has them come every week to get food from her with the animal so she knows they didn't abandon them. So, it's been a struggle. People are abandoning their animals more. But I think the rescues, especially the dog rescues, are really on top of that. And they're trying to get those dogs and get them homes when they can. Because they can't surrender them to the SPCA.
Uh, just another wrinkle, you might say, in the fabric of our society is, uh, is COVID nineteen is not helping.
No, I, we, we just had a family, they, they had their, lost their mom. They had four cats, her cats, the moms. They all got pregnant and gave birth, uh, within a month, so they had sixteen kittens. So, lo, uh, uh, and luckily, some of them were sick, and Animal Services helped us with that. But we still have, that's only one household. So it, it's, uh, a struggle right now to handle all these animals, but, um, that's what we're here for, so.
All right, thank you, Tara.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, Tiny House Project.
Yes, the Tiny House Project. So we did some additional research and reached out to both Alicia Cadell as well as Andrew Linekey on the Tiny House Project. And some of the questions that came up last time was, you know, is this the same project that we're familiar with, or is it different? And the bottom line is, this would be a new program, um, separate from the Sacramento Region Builders Exchange Design Build Project that's taken place in the past. So this new Tiny House Project would essentially give the Construction Two class, um, an additional level to work on, where they will actually build a home versus creating individual parts, such as only doing the electrical or only doing plumbing. This kind of does, it ties in everything together. It also gives students an opportunity to have work-based learning, um, take place because they're no longer able to do kind of like job site shadowing that maybe has happened in the past. In our discussions with the district, if we recommended the thirty-three thousand two seventy-five, they could make up the difference that had to do with teacher training and some of those other additional costs. And it would allow us to fully fund the project in terms of materials and other things that are required to make the project happen. So the staff recommendation is the thirty-three thousand two seventy-five. I believe Andre Linekey is on the phone, if you have questions. But he's fully supportive of the staff recommendation, as is, um, Alicia Cadell and Angela Griffin.
Good. Any questions on those?
So this is not funding the staff salary? Is that what I just heard?
It's funding a variety of things. I could pull up the actual one, but it doesn't cover, um... So in the initial request, it covered things such as staff training and some travel-related expenses. And that part would be picked up by Folsom Cordova. The only part that's somewhat teacher-related is specific certifications that are required, kind of at interim or intervals. That is included in the recommendation.
Okay.
I do also have a public comment for Andre Linekey, um, who also did submit. And, uh, I have shared that with the council, and there's a copy in the back for the public.
Okay. And eighty-one?
Eighty-one is called Rancho Rises Up, and it's a workforce development program by Saunders Solution. And, and a revised, um, budget and proposal that they gave us for a smaller pilot program that would be available between seventy-five and a hundred individuals. They could pilot it in an amount that would cost fifteen thousand dollars. So based upon that revised budget and proposal, the staff recommendation is to do a pilot program in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and do so at an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand. I believe Andrea Fournier may also be available for questions, if anyone has any.
Micah, did you take, uh, take a look at this? This is, um, I think this is almost like a pure economic development sort of move. I, I don't know if we have anything else in our categories here that is pure economic development like that.
Sure, Mayor, uh, Council, Micah Runner, Deputy City Manager. Uh, I did have a conversation, conversation with Andrea, and, uh, it really is a workforce development. But it also is a support for our community, and actually, it's for residents of our community to do workforce development and training for them. Uh, so it is a little bit of a blend of helping our residential community, but through an economic development or workforce development tool. And so, uh, through that conversation, we thought it might be, uh, something that we could work on a pilot and see how this works and see how this, uh, works, especially now as we're affected by, uh, COVID nineteen and the different people are affected. It's a, a good tool for developing some of our residents.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I like the idea of, um, some of the programs that we have, uh, that are giving you some skills to the people who didn't have it before. And that's, this is another way of, uh, helping people that otherwise wouldn't be, so. I like the idea of this, this pilot program. It sounds very good.
All right, any other comments?
No, I, I like it at this scale. Um, that also gives them the opportunity to kind of prove the concept and then go to Seattle for funding, uh, which is generally how we've approached it with Folsom Community Partnership and other folks, is we would do the pilot, they can get the data, and then they can go and try to get funding from there.
Yep. That makes sense.
Sounds good.
Okay, that takes us through the applications that we had flagged.
So David, I want to bring up the, uh, a council-initiated lead one that we talked about. For the, uh, Rancho Cordova baseball team. So, um, I had a talk with the, uh, the coach, and I, I asked, uh, to reach out. And so what they really need, and, and we talked about this, is about twenty thousand dollars. And what that's going to cover is baseball uniforms, because they don't have enough for the JV and freshman squad. And also, a lot of the team happens to be on the lower socioeconomic. So they've been using a lot of baseball gloves from Little League. So when our team shows up, they don't actually have the money to actually play, um, baseball and actually have the gloves and the equipment to be able to do it at the freshman and sophomore level. He has raised money through private donors for some of the senior stuff, but the, there's still not enough for the sophomores. So what I'm looking for is just twenty thousand dollars one time, so they can at least have enough money to be able to get our team to look for, you know, uh, you know, have that kind of feeling that they're not embarrassed when they show up sporting Rancho colors for our kids.
So Garrett, a couple of things. One, um, Dave and I discussed this at the Folsom meeting last week. The superintendent is now aware, um, of your concerns and the interest in it, in the council to make sure that getting uniforms was a priority. To, to kind of pull a number like that out, I, I definitely want to see a proposal that's, that's gone through staff vetting, on something like that. I'm, I'm not saying no, but twenty grand for uniforms and gloves sounds like a whole lot of money and a whole lot of gloves and uniforms. And the procurement of that would be from the, would be from the district if it was in the fu, the sports funding, um, bucket that we created or funded or whatever it was. This seems a little more specific, so, you know, I would at least want Stacy to, to, to do the, the due diligence to make sure we're not paying, you know, five hundred dollars a mix, not saying that this coach is doing anything like that. But that just seems like a very round number to pull out of the air and say, this is what they need. To me, that, that just kind of screams of, you know, inaccuracies can, can happen.
Yeah, Donald, I, um, I was at, you know, the Folsom Cordova with you and discussed it there. And I'd had a previous discussion in, I don't know, maybe December, with, uh, District Athletic Director and talked about, uh, what the situation was with baseball. And it sounds like, uh, based on the communication, was that an email was sent to all of us? Uh, okay, there's a, there was an email that was sent.
No, I, I don't believe the council received the, the email.
Someone, I, I got it from someone, maybe it was from the school district. Showed two uniforms, said this is the old one, this is the new one. Stacy, did you see anything like that?
The mayor and vice mayor received the email.
Um, in any case, uh, the interesting thing that happened was, when I was at Senior Day, just so, and I was talking to the principal and, and a vice principal about it. Principal didn't know about this controversy, vice principal wasn't sure about it either, thought it'd been taken care of. At the very next tent, the PTA tent, the president of the PTA is a baseball mom. And she said, oh yeah, we got one new jersey. It was kind of cheap, was her comment. But what we don't have are jerseys for JV or jerseys for freshmen. And our pants, belts, our other equipment is all pretty, pretty beat up. Uh, we could not field any team of the diversity team with the uniforms we have at this point. And I thought, that was a very interesting comment, direct from a source, you know, a team mom, basically. Saying that, that's, that's our situation as a team. This year, we didn't know what we were going to do for JV. So, um, I think we probably need to look a little further into it. I don't know that, that twenty thousand is the magic number, but that's, that number fa, sounds not too unreasonable to me, knowing what these things cost. So Stacy, did you get any additional contact with, uh, with the coach, any, any backup? Anything like that happen since our last meeting?
Um, I did speak to Peter Maroon, the athletic director, as well as Scott Alstrom, the coach. Uh, when I spoke to Scott, he thought he submitted a grant request, but we didn't receive anything. He did not submit it through the normal channels, meaning he didn't go through the district to then funnel it through us. So they had no indication of his request as well, which could be part of the confusion. When I spoke to Peter Maroon, the athletic director, he said a red uniform set was purchased approximately two years ago. And then a black uniform set was donated this past year, but the team never actually got to wear them because the season was interrupted due to COVID. In the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one Athletic Improvement Plan, they have a plan to purchase white jerseys, which would essentially become kind of their tournament play or a convenience set if they had weeks in which they were going to play three games. In my follow-up conversation with Scott today, which was the first time I spoke to the, um, baseball coach directly, he did indicate that there could be a need for uniforms for JV and freshmen. But he's not sure in terms of numbers and things like that, because he doesn't know what the participation level is going to be, especially in light of COVID nineteen. And he also indicated there could be some need for equipment. He specifically said balls and other equipment. But he also said, through his conversations with Mark Beamish, who is the school athletic director, that, um, there could be other funding sources. So he didn't specify a, a, a dollar amount when I spoke to him, nor was he able to provide an actual write-up because I had asked him if he had something that he could submit to me, and he didn't have it, at least at the point I spoke to him today. So I don't have anything concrete.
Then I, then I, I called him after Stacy talked to him, and so we, I'll just, um, I can have him, I'll work with him to make sure, and Stacy, to make sure there's a write-up, since we need the exact numbers on exactly how much it would cost to outfit our team. And then it's going to be more than twenty thousand, because I know how much baseball gear and equipment costs. But I'm willing to do about twenty for our, our, our boys to not look, you know, beaten up gear and outdated equipment. And so I'll make sure, if that's what we need, to be able to make sure the funding can get there. Is that, is that fine?
Garrett, is it, and again, I'm, and this, and you know how, how I think about high school sports and stuff. But, you know, the, the reason we make a fund like this and we allow the district and the school, and it sounds like there's, there's a pretty big disconnect here as far as the understanding of the school and, and what need is being described to you. But as much as we can, the reason that we were creating these funds was to, to, to the people running the school, I figured out what the equitable distribution is to these different teams. Cause you know, you know, the, the first year we had the football team to have performance. Then, you know, you had girl basketball, I think was one that we, volleyball, something like that. Uh, but I think it was like almost this kind of game of who knew council members best? And then they would get taken care of. So as much as possible, I'd like to keep our fingers out of that, who's getting what. Um, but again, I'm not saying no to this. I'm not saying I want to vote no. But, you know, i- i- if we can figure out how to accommodate that in the, in the fund, then we should do it there. We shouldn't, we, we should, as much as possible, not have these set aside where like, you sport, you know, girl or boy, you're going to get special treatment this year for this because you caught me at the grocery store or at some meeting or at some event. Um, so that, that, that's the one thing here that they, and again, around number, we just say, ah, about twenty grand. And then to me, the, the big, and I know you just said this, this, you think that's not even going to accommodate the whole thing. But when you say twenty grand, when the need lets say native in fifteen thousand, then somebody figures out what to do with the other seven, right? So working backwards from what is the need and what does that cost? And then figure out what we're going to fund from, I feel a lot more comfortable than saying, here's how much I have to spend. Tell me what you do with it.
Those are two good points, Donald. Um, you know, my recommendation here might be, let's add twenty thousand to that fund. Let's tell the school district, we expect all of our teams to look good. And clearly we have an identified issue here with this baseball team. Um, I've heard, heard a couple of different stories from a couple of different sources. But still leave it to, uh, to their ultimate discretion, although they know we're looking hard at this baseball situation. That might be the way to, to best address it.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I hear what you guys are saying, but on the other hand, I don't feel like putting a spotlight on the baseball coach and making the district come after him. If I give him twenty thousand dollars, because that's what he needs for jerseys and stuff like that to take care of the kids, it takes kind of the onus off him. He's going to get, catch a bunch of heat for doing this. And he's stepping out of his way and that money is his own, that he had to pay for those jerseys. That didn't come from anything on that. And so he needs this money to outfit the, the sophomores and the freshmen and make them look decent.
Oh, that was self-raised. That was, that was self-raised funds.
That was self-raised by him. And so this is our coach that basically had to use his own money to go get money, to go get jerseys. And now they're, they're saying other things and I'm not looking to get him fired off this thing. I'm going to, I'll be the coverage for him. Let's make sure our kids look good. Now, if the basketball team was saying they were coming to David and saying that, hey, we really need some jerseys because they're ripped and torn and that, that, that's something. I mean, they, this, this is an outreach by, you know, me and David are in the baseball program all the time. And so is D- uh, Donald, for goodness sake. And this is one of those guys that came up and, and they need the help. And I, I mean, I don't want to have to, I mean, we, let's just make sure that they, I don't want to give it to him and then put a spotlight on him, make him feel bad and make it so possibly he can lose his job over this.
Let's be honest, you already did when you asked for it this way. Um, and again, this is what I, personally, this is what I want to avoid when it comes to. Type of thing. So I don't want somebody to say, because you know me, we're going to get more than somebody else. Like the reason we created these buckets is we said, this is how much money we're going to commit. Cause I think, fortunately, when we did that with the football team and we said three hundred grand, which, hey, I don't want to get pressed about it. We want to lead championships this year, breaking down, not complaining. But at the same time, what we then started having a lot of conversation about, um, I'm sorry, there's some background. Um, but there's, we started having these side conversations about, you know, the track team needed this. And the, I want to say it was girl basketball or one of them, that, okay, then they wanted something, then they wanted something. And we just got to that point where instead of having these one-off conversations where we're setting the priority for Cordova High based on whoever's most politically connected to said council member, let's bring it back to the superintendent and the school districts and, and the, and the school sites to say, this is what we think we need. Now, that's why we have two-by-two, that's why we can express our interest and our concern and our observations that we've had, which you have, you know, Garrett, and we conveyed to, to Sarah last week and she took note of it and, you know, didn't push back. I, I, I know that there was still more due diligence being done and everyone was fine with that. I'm just saying that, I, I, I don't have a problem, David, with what you just said. I also have a problem with just saying, this is the fund and we would like the first thing that you address is, you know, uh, varsity, JV and freshman teams of baseball, because this is the feedback that we're getting and it's the observations that we hear. I don't even know if we necessarily need twenty thousand more. Um, and then the other thing that, to just say twenty thousand to me, it, it just, oh, it sets up a lot of alarm bells for me that, you know, if the need was, again, like I said, if the need was thirteen thousand for uniforms and we're throwing out twenty thousand dollars, that, that, that is around number is now what, what they have to work with. And I, and I always believe in, in this type of a, an approach, and maybe it's just my job as a charitable giving officer and my day job, is you don't work from how much money do you have to give me? You work with how, what, what is the need that you have? Give me a proposal and then I can look and see what funding I have, not to start off with, this is how much money I have. You tell me how much, you know, what you'd spend that on.
Stacy, did you get any dollar figures in that conversation today?
He did not provide me with any.
Did, did you schedule any follow-up? If you said this before, I've forgotten already, but did you schedule any follow-up or further discussions with him on this?
He said he was going to look through his email and other documents, but at the point that I spoke to him, he didn't have anything readily available.
Okay. Yeah. So I think our interests are unified in that we want this baseball situation taken care of. We want, um, as a principal, we want everybody who's playing for Cordova to look good. Um, and not be out there in something ratty or be poorly equipped. Um, and I know several of us have done this with our discretionary funds over the years. Uh, just last year I did something for track. Uh, I think all of us pitched in at one point or another on, on different things there. So, um, Donald and I did make this point to the superintendent. I reiterated again to the principal. I've got a good relationship with their athletic director. I think we can continue to work on this. Right now, we just have, somehow have to split the baby where we make sure baseball coach isn't punished for this. He gets what he needs and the program is still working with school district using their best discretion to achieve the goals we've outlined. That's, that's what I've got in mind in front of me here.
Well, David, I, I think, I think that, that, that coach being punished for this should go without saying that just because he, he saw a councilor and expressed that, you know, a need. Um, you know, I do think it's a little interesting that Garrett, you have a specific number and Stacy talked to him as well and doesn't have one. Um, but, you know, that's not creating a good relationship with school district. It's because said coach, again, finds a council member that somehow they're going to be punished for what, what they need or what they want. Um, so that, that should go without saying. I, I don't think there's any concern there whatsoever, um, of doing that. So, but, but again, we don't, I, I don't want to get in a position of encouraging that kind of activity that like, well, because the baseball coach caught Garrett or David or you or I, because we're at Little League games, that somehow that's the strategy to getting more funding out of Measure H than to go through the proper channels, which, again, Garrett, you weren't here in the beginning when we had this and it was very haphazard. It's worked a lot better allowing the administration to help us set priorities and allow them to set priorities. Um, you know, in, in doing these things. So, uh, and again, I, I want the baseball team to get everything that they need and to look great. But I also want to make sure that there's an equity there that, you know, whether it's, you know, do girls softball need that too, right? Um, or, or other teams.
So Garrett, what do you think about, I mean, I'm not, I'm not willing to let this baseball thing down. So what do you think about the, uh, add twenty thousand to the fund? Um, I think at this point it's clear to everybody what our expectation is with regard to that. Um, even if we don't know what the exact dollar figure is. Does that achieve your, your goal?
Garrett, you're on mute.
Uh-oh. Donald had a good time to lose him.
Stacy, stop muting me. There you go. All right.
There we go.
So. Stacy keeps muting me.
Stacy keeps.
She does. Stop doing that, Stacy. Uh, my concern is that, um, that the money won't show up where we want it. You know what I'm saying? Like, we could just give it to the coach and say, spend it on the thing. And I agree with Donald that you're concerned that everyone's just going to try to pick a, a council member. And, and, but, you know, someone stepped up and said something that to, and you were, I wasn't there to see what happened when we put large sums of money and funds and gave out to people and then did it that way. I, I, I wasn't here for that. But I was here for, you know, there's a guy in need. So what I'm concerned about, hold on, I'll get you. What I'm concerned about is that the money won't go to something we did. And if we just said, here, we're going to give twenty grand to the baseball program, it goes to the baseball program. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it's guaranteed that we don't have to worry about it finding some other place to go.
Well, I, I feel what you're asking. My problem is that when we used to do that, what we, what we created was a lot of inequity. There, the football team got three hundred thousand and no one else got anything for the year, right? And then we started getting five thousand here and, oh, we'll give you twelve hundred dollars over here for this. And it was just, it was just basically whoever they ran into or on council, they would ask for that for something, right? And so what we've been doing is putting the onus on the district to say, we've gone through our coaches. We talked to them. These are the things that we think are the most needed. Now, in this case, we have a good relationship with the school district. We've expressed our concern for this issue and we should expect that our partner will listen to us and use the funding that we're giving them in a wise way. Instead of us saying, here, we're going to have everybody else in the district in a Cordova High operate in this one manner of working with the district and the superintendent and, and the principal. But because this coach found you, he gets twenty thousand dollars and everyone else has to go through the other way. That's my concern. Cause we spent a lot of money in this kind of a bracket.
Well, I mean, like, but it, uh, on the other hand, I mean, do we, I mean, most, a lot of these projects are, are client-driven. So, I mean, uh, uh, not client-driven, but, um.
Applicant.
You know, or driven by council members. So, I mean, if the council member project can prerogative on the side, I mean, like, we still can go through that. But if I'm like, oh, I also want to do this, I mean, or David finds something wrong, a lot of these projects are driven by us. I, it's, it's, I just don't see the really big issue with it unless you think it's going to cause havoc. Cause they're going to all start trying to find us to help put money towards like guys having ba- basketballs.
So, so Garrett, I guess a, a good example of this last year was a council, it was me. So I'm going to, I'll throw my cell phone in the bus as I do this, was the summer school program that the superintendent and secretary unified ended up asking for. But we didn't meet with him until after the application had closed. And so he didn't realize that he could have applied for something like that. That was, I came back and I said, look, we had this meeting, we'd like to do this. You and I had agreed basically to ask for it, right? Because we were in that too. Here's a very specific fund that we've created and a way to prioritize things and a way to go about asking for funding. And so everybody else with baseball now are going to go through that process of asking for money. And baseball, because they found you, gets twenty thousand dollars outside.
Well, here's the, here's the, here's the deal. Baseball did try to submit the application and did it incorrectly. So the reason I'm coming to you and doing it this way, because they submitted the application wrong and didn't know all the different things and tried to do online and failed. So I said, well, let me see if I can go and see if I can get council members willing to donate money to be able, or not donate money, take money out of Measure H to take care of this, because I would have made sure it got money the other way as well. Because I don't know what the district would have chosen if this was very high. But it's very high to me as a councilor of the city and one of the ones that supports the Little League and all that stuff to make sure that the next step looks correct. You know what I'm saying? So I see, I hear what you're saying, but just because someone makes a mistake, then, then council members, it's our prerogative to see if we can self-fix that.
Uh, and again, my feedback to that is had they gone through the way that you're talking about and they submitted on their own, they weren't really doing it the, the way we've, we've encouraged them all to do, which is to go through this fund that we create. So there, so he had applied and gotten that grant in, that application in, we would have submitted it to the superintendent, which, and she would have then ranked it or said, we'll put it into this fund. But because he didn't do that or it didn't work, but he talked to you, now they're being treated differently than all of the rest of the sports at Cordova High.
Yeah, this one actually goes, I think, to the athletic director. The athletic director at Cordova works with the district athletic director. They determine what their priorities are for that fund and then they internally decide how to fund them. Now, my guess is Garrett, this guy's the new baseball coach, I think just this, is this year.
Mm-hmm.
Probably didn't know, you know, how that worked. He's got a spring season, not a fall season. You know, so everything's sort of stacked against him figuring this out. And as I understand it, he walked into a debt, you know, so, oh, congratulations to the baseball coach, he owes money.
Right.
Some, some.
And so he did a bunch of stuff to raise money on his own. Exactly. And raised a bunch of money and then the money disappeared.
Yeah. No, I, Garrett, again, I, I, I am supportive of this idea. And I think we can trust Volks Cordova to be a good partner with this. We can trust Stacy to make sure that as, as this fund gets, gets spent this year, that this is addressed in there. Um, I just have a lot of heartburn about circumventing a process that we put in place to prevent exactly this, which was because somebody found one of us, they get, they go outside of the normal process because you were in a game or bumped into this coach or something and all of a sudden it's like, okay, now we get to treat, treat baseball differently than, you know, the track team or wrestling or, you know, badminton, I don't know whether. Um, because they found, and that, that, that was, that's the reason we created these funds.
At the contract level, we can specify certain things if there are priorities that we want to address. So I feel like there's ways that we can work it into. We just need to know what is the overall dollar threshold.
That's a good suggestion. So my, my suggestion to solve this was add, add twenty to the fund. Um, and then add on what Stacy just said. Basically in our discussions with them, we're saying, oh, by the way, we want to be sure this baseball thing is taken care of. We don't want to hear about this again. It's a priority for us.
And figure out what that amount is.
Do we need to have, so do I need to have Scott actually get all the quotes and stuff like that? And then have that so we can write it into the contract or how you want to do this?
We would need that no matter what.
Stacy.
I mean, we, write a check and then go spend it.
Right. We go through a contract negotiation period. And during that process, I would just make sure that the athletic director shares with me, what is the cost breakdown associated with that piece? Whether it's five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand, et cetera.
The good news about this discussion is that it's raised this issue of what do we want our kids out there equipped with? And what do we want them to look like? And what do we want them to feel like as a result of, you know, how they're equipped? And I think that having that discussion was such an obvious, uh, obvious issue has been valuable. And following through on it in some way just puts an exclamation mark on, on how we feel about it. So that's my, that's my suggestion, Garrett. Um, and I think Donald said he isn't opposed to that as, as an idea.
I know, absolutely not. And again, this is exactly why, like, how we pitch Measure H. The point was we're trying to level up the playing field. And, and Volks Cordova is the exact, I, you know, example of, you know, you can go do a spaghetti feed in Folsom and pay for these jerseys, right?
Yep.
We can't do that the same way in Rancho Cordova. And we need Measure H to help level that playing field, literally leveling the playing field for our kids. Um, so this is exactly why we want to do it. But I think we've come up with a much more equitable process in the last couple of years than we did in the first few years, where it really was the Wild West of whoever knew a council member or a staff member or was a favorite of the principal got funding. Um, and a lot of other ones that didn't. And Garrett and I, you know, both very passionate about the wrestling team, you know? And they didn't really ask for any funding because they didn't really know how to do it and they weren't a very big club. And, you know, and they finally kind of figured out some folks to ask for it. Um, but, you know, the, the process that we've had in, in place, I really want to protect that. And that's why I guess we've been kind of avid about this, Garrett, is while I get your, your ask and your need, I think there's a way to address it without damaging what efforts we put into creating a really good process.
Yeah. And these, you know, these council initiatives matter. Um, this, this thing, um, we did a couple of years ago. Uh, I use council discretionary funds to buy a new tent for the cross-country team, because they had a new coach and he walked in and looked at this old tent, said, I can't tell what color it is. It's certainly not Cordova colors and I can't read the name on it. But we've been using it at cross-country meets, this tent. Um, so, you know, we did not look good at cross-country meets. And it was right before the season was going to start. And so I can't remember if I rounded up other dollars or if I just used my own funds for it. But in any case, we got a new tent, not a huge expense. But what happened was that coach kind of got inspired. Um, and he may have, that may have happened without the tent, but that was an indication to him that there was community support for what he was doing. And that team went from twelve kids to seventy kids. And they've raised money. They have corporate partnerships now. They have sponsorship from Brooks Shoes. And by the way, that coach is the one who's trying to start the Rancho Cordova Track Club and bring track back to, uh, elementary schools and summer activities to elementary schools and do running events in Rancho Cordova. All because potentially City stood up and said, yeah, we got your back on this. Here's a new tent and other stuff along the way. So I, I think there's a lot of value in this and hearing what our residents are saying, what the challenges are, particularly when our kids are involved, um, in something like this, it could be easily overlooked if, if we didn't take an active role. And, you know, if it was a, a science fair team here in front of us or an engineering team or that, you know, building team we just funded with the tiny house project, doesn't matter for me what it is. We just have to be sure that our kids aren't being short-changed.
I think that's one of the things. We were talking about baseball. We're talking about track. We're talking about, um, basketball. And the, uh, one of our kids has the telephone, the number on his, on his uniform falls off. I mean, I, I want all of them to have, um, Cordova, uh, uniforms. I want them to be dressed like everyone else is to show that there's some support behind them. And as, you know, we help pay for the, uh, track uniform, um, our miscellaneous money. Uh, whether it's, uh, football, whether it's basketball, the girls softball, I don't care. You know, all of them should have that kind of support. I'm glad we have the, uh, baseball and we're supporting that, but we need the others also. So if we can get some sort of, uh, information on what all of them need, really, so they can, they look like Cordova.
All right. Are we, is that by acclamation? Add twenty thousand?
Yeah, just one other thing. You know, Garrett, you also, this, this, this brings up a really good thing to, to remind us all about the value of our two-by-two. When you see things like that, letting whoever it is that's, that's on whatever two-by-two it is, or in this case it's David and I, um, like, these are the kinds of things that we want to share and, and like our concerns with things like that. But when we see numbers falling off of, you know, jerseys, like, like that's stuff to talk about. And if, you know, it also helps probably the superintendent understand what kind of image we think we're seeing out there too. Because if we're going to hand them, you know, Stacy, how big is this budget, this fund?
Uh, we're currently recommending a hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. And if you go up by twenty, two hundred and eleven thousand.
Okay. So if we're, we're, if we're going to invest two hundred thousand dollars in sports programs, like us giving feedback and saying why, why this is important, if, if it's not used the way we expect and misses an address next year, like, I have a lot of information about how much money we, we, right? If it's not being addressed. So Garrett, we have a lot of views on this over how these funds are spent because we're the one that's directing it, right? Like, we have set this aside with an expectation that we're going to address the things that we're expecting. If they're not addressed, I have a lot of apprehension that you're about voting against, right? So, you know, we, we should feel very comfortable with expressing our concern and then leaving it in the superintendent's hands to address it and to, and to perform based on our expectation.
Are you good, Garrett?
Yeah.
You brought this up.
Sounds good. Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. By acclamation on that one. Anything else? We've covered the list plus one.
So, so far the changes I've heard is potentially increasing the Festival of Flowers to twelve thousand. If the event takes place in October as planned and that would all come from the Community Partnership Fund. So it doesn't actually change the overall budget.
That's a plus seven, right?
Right. But because the Community Partnership Fund is its own little section. Um, the Playa Art Park, I heard the suggestion to add twenty thousand dollars to the overall public art fund and continue working with them to see if there's an ability to have a Playa Art Park in Rancho Cordova.
Yep.
And then I potentially heard increasing the Athletic Improvement Plan from one ninety-one, seven ninety to two eleven, seven ninety. So an additional twenty there.
Yep. Anything else? All right.
Nope. Sounds good.
We take a motion on items ten through, the baseball item. Ten through eighty-one, plus the baseball item, plus the uniform item.
Athletic Improvement Plan.
Plus the Athletic Improvement Fund item. There we go. Everyone knows what I'm talking about anyway. Roll call, roll call, please. I'm sorry. Motion by McGarvey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Terry.
Terry. Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yep.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
And just for the purpose of the note, the Athletic Improvement Plan is application twenty-four.
All right. And we have not had a running total on where we are, which has made this a more interesting process. Do you have one?
Um, you added forty thousand and our prior total was one, nine, nine, four, six, six, zero.
So we're plus forty over that?
Yep.
Do we want to run with a higher number or do we need to allocate from somewhere else to cover that? Do you understand?
I do. Um, I think we have.
Almost de minimis.
Right. I think there's going to be some items that move forward in the full funding that we're recommending and there's going to be some things that don't. And I think we have the ability to come back mid-year and to provide an update.
That's good. All right. Did we cover?
Fastest measure H funding, fastest measure H funding ever.
I know. It's kind of remarkable.
Um, I do want to close the loop on one additional item. It wasn't specifically flagged as a discussion item, but it certainly generated a lot of discussion last time and it had to do with the feasibility study as it relates to a food bank system, whether that's a single food bank, food pantries, et cetera. So I just wanted to bring something to your attention. What we did is we put in funding in the community enhancement fund so that the city could undertake a feasibility study and address the food bank system in Rancho Cordova. And have that broader than just a single food bank. So we could take inventory of everything that's happening in Rancho Cordova and go from there. We did leave the funding recommendation the same in terms of the dollar value for the Cordova Community Food Locker. We just opened it up so that they could use it towards other operational things, whether that was salaries for an executive director, a bookkeeper, preventative maintenance, et cetera.
We have been encouraging them, uh, nursing them along in some ways, hoping, you know, for them to grow as an entity. I think they've made all the right moves near as I can tell on their end. Like they're an independent 501(c)(3), I guess, at this point relatively, relatively newly. And, uh, you know, we need to help them along that path. So I don't want them to feel like this is a knockdown. No, we didn't fund your full grant because clearly the city still has their back in a, in a lot of ways. And if anything comes up during the year, um, our ears are open on that front, particularly at this time, I would say.
Yes.
Yeah. There's a lot of people going in on that and we've found some new, uh, entities who seem to be putting like there's a, uh, a church, I think, and they're doing once a month. They're doing, so is that, you know, what, all do we have? I don't know.
And that will be part of the purpose of doing this study is it will look at, you know, what is the current need and the projected need within the community? We'll look at the current service levels as well as a gap analysis if there's things missing. And then we can also look into a planning phase and a business plan in terms of, you know, what are the resources for food? For funds, for volunteers and kind of look at all those things.
Stacy, have you had a project, uh, come to us with some big crisis mid-year and have to deal with not changing where the dollars go, but saying, we now need more? And how, how have you handled that? I'm aware of them because I've handled them with, you know, city, with the city manager. They've mainly been youth sports kind of stuff, which is why we established that fund to deal with, you know, unexpected youth sports stuff. But what happens otherwise?
So we have a resolution in place that allows the city manager to authorize expenditures up to 30% so long as they don't exceed 100,000. That's his authority right now under the community enhancement fund. And anything that's kind of outside of that realm would come back to you because it would require council approval.
All right. So yeah, my, I would just encourage you then that if the food, well, let's hold the food locker out. There's a special entity. If they run into some sort of a barrier, that I would certainly like to, like to hear about it, see what we can do to help.
Yep. We can keep those lines of communication open.
Because we're pretty far off from what they requested. All right. Anybody have anything else? Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, a comment, I just wanted to take this opportunity and thank Stacy Delaney and, uh, Daniel.
Words out of my mouth.
Leonardich. Uh, the, this was a very unusual year in dealing with my, our community enhancement fund process. We had to extend the application period. The review process with the, the social distancing was not the easiest, uh, but they worked through it. I would like to, uh, also acknowledge others, internal team, team of staff that worked with it. Uh, really, as you can attest, if we come down to only a handful of items to discuss and, and negotiate, it's a good process. So really want to thank you for the great work that you've done.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah, absolutely. Because it wouldn't be going where we're going right now if we didn't have the staff we have. So thank you all.
Particularly in a tough year like this where we actually have to reduce what we've done previously. So very, very good work.
Thank you. And I also want to thank the team that helped review everything. It did take a whole group of people to look at it from different angles. So I appreciate their input as well. So to recap, we are going to come back to you no later than June 15th with a resolution to adopt. And that resolution will include the final list of projects that were selected for funding. It will list the funding amount that was approved and the duration of the grant, if for some reason it was a multi-year request. But I don't believe there was any that we're recommending as a multi-year at this point. We will notify all applicants of our funding decisions that you make no later than June 30th of 2020. Um, I'm not anticipating to come back with another update. So the next time you see me, it's going to just be the consent calendar with the fiscal year 2021 items on it.
All right. Very good.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. All right. We're going to move on to item 12.2. Not sure which staff are going to chat.
Mr. Dingram will give the staff.
All right. Adam is up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think we're going to pull that up on the screen.
You still at Columbia, Adam?
I, I am still in, uh, with my phone memory from the, from the library. So, Mayor and Council, we are here to report back on and discuss with you, uh, the tenant eviction ordinance that you adopted as both an urgency and regular ordinance in response to the COVID-19 issue. Ready for the next slide? And, um, the, the ordinance established an eviction moratorium, uh, for residential and commercial tenants, two separate matters. And provided four circumstances in which, uh, there were valid reasons and are valid reasons for delayed rent payment. It didn't alleviate the ultimate requirement to pay rent, but it did provide four identified COVID-related reasons why both types of tenants could delay their rent payments in the city. My next slide. And tenants are required to pay the amount of rent they are, uh, able to pay, provide advance written notice to their landlords and proof that their inability was due to COVID-19 related circumstances. And after doing so, the tenant has 120 days under our ordinance to repay all the rent that they, that they were due. And from the date that the governor's, governor's, uh, executive order expires. The, the way the ordinance works is, um, the, the actual expiration of the, of the program, the program starts essentially winding down upon the expiration of Governor Newsom's order and thereafter goes into, uh, a repayment period. So such that as of today, um, the ordinance's protections would entirely expire on September 28th. And when the governor's executive order expires, potentially that repayment window would start winding down from 120 days to a shorter period. And that would begin the repayment obligation for those who have already taken the advantage of, of the city's program. Next slide. The governor has now established that the statewide moratorium, um, on evictions with the specific criteria. The California Judicial Council has taken certain specific actions, including a rule, um, regarding unlawful detainers. And that is essentially the, of, of, of evictions and foreclosures. And, um, the rules will remain in effect until 90 days after expiration of the governor's, uh, state of the emergency. Or the rescinding or modification of those judicial, judicial council rules. Next slide. So we are here this evening and we're happy to take comments or questions for both myself or Mr. Runner to provide the council with options that you would then relay to us and we would come back to you with potential additional actions. Or not. And the first would simply to be to let your ordinance expire on its own. If you do that, then the expiration date, the ultimate and final expiration date would be September 28th. And, uh, those who have taken advantage of this opportunity to get local COVID rent relief uh, would have the 120 days to repay. The second alternative would be to preemptively revise the ordinance to extend the tenant protections beyond September. And, uh, potentially, potentially thereby giving tenants a, a larger obligation, a larger obligation to pass due or previously due rents to repay within that 120-day window. And the third would be to modify the ordinance based on whether the governor ultimately decides to extend the executive order in 2720. And if they do extend it, the council could, could then, if he does extend it, the council could then decide at a pre, future meeting whether or not it wants to extend its ordinance. So if you decide that you are going to take no action at this time and begin to let the ordinance, you know, wind down, you could at a future meeting still take action, um, with respect to number three. Mr. Runner, do you have any comments, clarifications or perspectives to add from an economic development or city management perspective?
Mic is on his way up.
Mayor, Council, Mike Runner, Deputy City Manager. I'll just, uh, kind of remind council that when this first came forward, uh, there was a discussion about whether or not they wanted to tie it to the, uh, to the order by the governor's office. And this is really the, uh, obligation that, that we made as staff to bring back this forward to discussion at this time. Uh, in, in order if there was changes to be made or desire to be made. Uh, we did, uh, do some, uh, survey work with our commercial property owners, uh, just seeing what the impact has been. Uh, there has been, uh, an increase in amount of, uh, no surprise, tenants not, uh, paying rent and, and, uh, coming, uh, under this, uh, circumstances. And so, uh, this is impacting the commercial property owners. Uh, I had, had a conversation with our, uh, neighborhood, neighborhood services staff and it comes to the residential side. They have not received a lot of calls, a couple of calls, uh, related to this, this ordinance. So it hasn't been a, a high, uh, kind of use or, or interest of either both the commercial tenants or the residential tenants at this time. But, um, so that's really what we've been seeing from a, from an operational standpoint.
Okay. I just read today in the, I think it was today in the Business Journal. The governor is in negotiations with the California Apartment Association to modify his order to, um, allow a loan to be made basically by the state. That they would repay to the property owner in terms of, uh, tax credits, future tax credits linked to the property. But thereby, uh, convertible also to cash that the owner choose to sell. That would keep the owner of the property whole and still allow rent to be deferred for up to a 10-year, a 10-year period by a, uh, by a renter. So, um, there's active negotiations going on. It sounds like, you know, we're set up for either option one or three. So it's not to conflict or confuse the otherwise statewide situation. When we first enacted this, there was no statewide answer. Now there is and they're, they're trying to figure out what the next step of it is. That's my read of it anyway.
Well, it sounds like from what you said, that there's, uh, so a kind of a cushion for both the owners and the renters both. I'm glad to hear that because I think since we don't really know anymore than anyone else does, that COVID-19 is going to do, how long it's going to last before we start getting out of this hole that, uh, virus has put us into. I think that's nice that there's going to be, uh, some help with the, uh, property owners. And as you said, the governor is, uh, negotiating right now, but still it's, uh, helping both sides and that's really important.
All right. Other comments? So I, I suggest we're in line for number one, natural order of things. If the governor and, and the state choose not to do anything, we could revisit that. So Adam.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That'd be the.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That'd be a real, that'd be a realistic option, Adam.
Yet, yes, it would be. Although what had happened is potentially the 120-day period for repayment would have started winding down. But that is something that if you, you know, wanted us to, to double back and modify or re-extend, we could probably modify it and extend it after the fact.
Okay.
Good. I'm glad we have that flexibility.
All right. So, uh, without objection, I think the suggestion of staff is continue to monitor this. Let us know when the governor does something or when he doesn't.
Good. Uh, so, so could, could we have a, do you mind taking a quick motion to give us direction on number, number one plus continue to monitor?
Okay.
Can I have the, uh, I'll see, first of staff, I'm sorry.
Sure.
In right now, the order's expiring when?
End of the month.
The end of this? Okay. Um, okay. So if, so if he doesn't extend it, okay, then September 28th would be the end of our moratorium and all rent would be due.
Yes. And essentially if, if somebody came in with 90 days left to, uh, in that 120-day period. And they would still be able to use our program, but they would only have until the end of it to, to repay all their rent. So we would only have 90 days. So the ordinance remains in effect, the application of the chapter remains in effect, but essentially the repayment window starts shrinking. So I, I, I do potentially think it's possible if, if we have an action by the governor on June 10th to, to adopt an extension to the ordinance and also give everyone, even those who first submitted in that, um, in that period, or at least for us to come back and look at giving them the, the same 120 days. We haven't specifically addressed ourselves to that issue.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the motion would be for, uh, number one and monitor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think our attorney agreed on that. So I'm, I motioned that.
Okay. Bob has moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded by Terry. Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Terry. Councilmember Terry.
Sorry about that. Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge is absent. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Aye.
Mayor Sander.
Aye. All right. That brings us to item 13, council requests for future agenda items. Are, are there any? Hearing none. I am going to move on to adjournment unless somebody has a better idea. Seeing no better ideas than adjournment, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.